Monday, October 7th, 2013, regular meeting of the Eugene Planning Commission to order. As is our custom, we reserve a few minutes at the beginning of each meeting for public comment from anyone that wishes to comment on any matter except items scheduled for public hearing or public hearing items for which the record has already closed. And is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak to something we're not scheduled to talk about yet? Okay. With that then, I'll move on to Agenda Item Two, the Appeal of Hearing's Official Decision, Laurel Ridge Zone Change, PUD, TIA, and Standards Review for our deliberations today. And with that, I will start with staff introduction.
Thank you. My name's Stephen Oaks with the City of Eugene Plowing Department. And the subject of today's deliberations are the appeal of the Hearing's Official Decision for Laurel Ridge PUD, file numbers PDT-12-2, TIA-12-6, SDR-12-5, and Z-12-2. And staff has provided an agenda-
Steve, if you could speak into the microphone.
Thanks. And staff has provided an Agenda Item summary to help guide deliberations today in the appeal of this decision. It walks through the Hearing's Official's decision, kind of in the same order that the Hearing's Official did, by looking at the Metro Plan diagram and then the Metro Plan text, and then how to apply the Laurel Hill Plan diagram. And then at the end of each of those sections, it poses a question the Planning Commission to answer. So if that's how you wish to deliberate today, that's a possibility. And then depending on how the Planning Commission answers these questions, we'll determine the next steps, which will be either to draft a final argument or further deliberations on the subject. So with that, if there are any questions of the Planning Commission, I'll pass it back to the Chair.
Okay. And we do have Deputy City Attorney with some procedural comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention a few things that have come up in the past week. Two letters came in that I think were forwarded to the Planning Commission from applicant's representative dated October 3rd. They're basically objections to new evidence that came in during the hearing. My position is that they're both correct. They both represent new evidence that came in at the hearing and that you should disregard that testimony. I also wanted to point out that one of the letters referenced discussions that were had at the hearing about where the appropriate line is and who said what when during discussions that the applicant might have had with staff. So there were statements by opponents, statements by the applicant, and statements by staff that were all hearsay new evidence. So those should all be disregarded because those were not in the original record before the Hearing's Officer. And then another item came in recently arguing that there's a requirement in the Eugene Code that requires, if there is going to be a staff report before the hearing, that it come in seven days ahead of time. The applicant is contending that the AIS is actually a staff report and that they need to have an opportunity to respond to that. So they have supplied a response. The city attorney's position is that the AIS is not a staff report, it doesn't fall under that code provision or the corresponding statute that has a similar requirement, and that the record's closed and you don't necessarily have to reopen the record to consider that.
Okay. Questions from Commissioners? Commissioner Belcher?
Do we have to affirm your position that the evidence that is challenged should not be accepted?
Yeah, you should discuss that and make a decision on that.
Commissioner Borowski?
I'm just a little bit unclear about the decision that you made, that the AIS isn't a staff report. If we decided to allow his rebuttal, what would the consequences of that be?
So there's been a response that's very substantive. There's a problem with the timeline. It would probably require the opponents to also have an opportunity to respond to not only the AIS but the applicant's submittal. So if you decide to take it in, it could cause problems with substantial prejudice on the other side.
Thank you. Commissioner Duncan?
If we deliberate and come to a decision, that issue is pushed forward as a legal challenge, what happens to our decision?
So if you move forward, decide not to consider the new evidence, move forward with the decision, and make a decision that the applicant is not happy with, that the applicant will, I'm assuming, appeal up to Luba, and that will be a procedural issue that they will probably raise at Luba. And if they prevailed on it, it would probably get sent back to then conduct more-
And you mean when it gets sent back, Luba wouldn't even consider any other appeal until that issue was resolved?
Well, they generally address all of the issues. So if there were other issues that they felt- The only reason they would send it back is if they determined that there was substantial prejudice for one side and that that somehow impacted your substantive decision on the merits. So they would send it back first.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I just wanted to confirm. So what we're considering, the staff report, is what's labeled as a staff report and attachments, which is for-
No, I don't-
So let me try to be clear on that. So what happened was, the notice went out for the original hearing, and the notice at the same time also said, "In the event that there is an appeal hearing, it's going to be on this date." And the reason that was done was because you were up against the 120-day deadline. So the notice that went out specifically said from staff, "We're not going to issue a staff report because we don't have time." If we were going to issue one, we'd have to do it seven days before, and we don't have time, so we're not going to issue one. The hearing was had, testimony came in, and then this Agenda Item summary appeared before you. And their argument is that that is a staff report that needed to come in prior, and that because it's a staff report and it didn't satisfy those requirements, they get to respond to it.
And just to clarify, the point about the seven-day notice for a staff report is in advance of a public hearing. There is no requirement for other Agenda Item summaries we give to you as we normally do for deliberations.
So then what are you looking for from us today? What would you recommend?
So there are the two issues. The record objection piece is one separate issue. You can deal with that on your own. As far as the staff report, you need to determine whether you want to reopen the record and take in that evidence, or if you want to keep the record closed and not consider new argument.
I'll go Commissioner Jaworski, then Commissioner Belcher.
Would this be precedent-setting in that if we make a determination that an AIS is not allowed, then in all future AISs therefore, to me, are not allowed? And I don't understand that. So I can't support that, and I'll let that be known now.
Commissioner Belcher?
Have we received the letter of objection and your response for the question about the AIS?
You don't have the letter in front of you yet.
Okay. So how do we decide when we don't know the argument and the rebuttal?
We can give the letter, there's a one-paragraph argument in the letter, the rest of it's substance. So you can have the record reopened, take that in. You're probably going to have to reopen the record anyway to take in the October 3rd letters that were submitted last week.
And does that put us back up against 120 days?
Well, my thought is, if you decide to reopen the record to put those, the October 3rd letters in, you just open it, put those in, and close it, and there's no implication on timelines.
And then we'd have to review them now and look forward?
Yeah, you probably would, given the timeframe.
Commissioner Baker?
So generally, an AIS is not considered a staff report. Is that correct, based on the title?
Right. Again, the issue at hand is really providing a staff report in advance of a public hearing. We have the choice whether to do it or not. If we choose to do it, it must be provided seven days in advance. That's the only thing that's governed by these time limits. Following a public hearing and leading up to deliberations, there's no requirements whatsoever about what kind of staff AIS we provide to you and notice of that in advance. As you know, many times we give those to you Fridays before the meeting on a Monday. So that's what we're talking about here.
Commissioner Jaworski?
If we open the record to allow those comments, does that mean we would have to open the record if the other side has other things to say?
Well, okay, so there's a number of things that you can do. And I'll just address the staff report argument. You still got that other piece out there. If you decide to open the record to consider the argument about, just the argument about whether they have an opportunity to respond, you can bring those in, and then you can reject the other arguments, the substantive pieces, because that's all new argument.
The October 3rd letters?
The October 3rd letters are the record pieces.
Record pieces, okay.
It might be easier just to get those off the table.
Yeah, that's what I'm wondering, is maybe we deal with the October 3rd letters first and then move on to the second one. So entertain a motion to receive. We need to reopen?
Yeah, you would-
Wait. Question?
Sure.
Why do we need to reopen? Why can't we just say that at this deliberations, you provided that testimony, that that wasn't allowed, and we just not allow it, period?
You could do that.
Yes, I would move that we do that for discussion.
Okay, second discussion. Commissioner Duncan?
I'd like to have a little more clarity on the motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm moving that we accept what was said by the attorney concerning testimony that was given at the public hearing, that it not be allowed, irrespective of whether there was a letter objecting or not. To me, that's irrelevant at this point. If that's what the attorney said, then we don't have to open any records or deal with that issue. We just won't allow that testimony based on the attorney's recommendation.
Could I suggest new testimony? When you worded it, you just said testimony.
Okay. Well, I think that's what the city attorney said, was that it was the new testimony needed to those, I think, three topics, if I remember right. Well, the applicant, the-
Well, there were, yeah. There was testimony, there was what could be framed as expert testimony presented by Jared Margolis, that I would advise you to disregard. And then there was testimony regarding the line of the plan designation that was, evidence submitted by the applicant, opponents, and staff, that you would want to disregard.
Yeah. So Commissioner Jaworski, is that what your motion is?
That's fine, yeah.
Okay. And second on that is, okay, any other discussion on that motion? So the motion is that we take the city attorney's advice on not allowing those as part of the record, that we disallow that as new testimony, and we don't need to reopen anything to put that in. We're just going to disallow the testimonies that she mentioned. Is that clear? Are we ready to vote?
It's-
Commissioner Borowski?
I mean, it's clear to me here, but without a reference to a paper? I mean, is it clear to a record?
Well, I think it was the testimony that came before us at the public hearing, and so that's-
Well, I mean, there was an hour of plus of testimony at the public hearing. The attorney cited two references. That's all. I know, and they're in a document that was sent to us, so I mean, that-
However, yeah, you can choose to do it that way if you want.
I guess I'm fine, but, you know, like I said, you know, so.
Okay. Well, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
I'll say nay.
Okay, one nay. Okay. So then the next issue is whether or not to reopen the record to receive.
Receive what?
Receive the, yeah, I think it was the next issue. Commissioner Belcher?
I'm going to propose something.
Okay, go ahead.
What I could do is I could just read the paragraph that addresses that procedural argument from the applicant into the record. So it wouldn't have the whole merits, the substantive argument that's presented in that letter.
So will we need to reopen the record then to receive that?
No, I can just say it.
Okay, okay.
Okay, yeah. Okay. This is the applicant's response to the first staff report issued to the Planning Commission in this appeal. The code requires the staff report to be issued before the appeal hearing, and then there's a footnote that has the code provision, 9.7670, that I'll read in a minute, so that the parties have an opportunity to respond to it at the hearing. Issuing the staff report after the hearing, as was done here, denies the applicant and the other parties their right to respond to the staff report, a right that is guaranteed by the code. We filed our appeal three days early so that the staff would have at least four days to prepare the staff report. The late staff report flunks the fairness test unless the city allows this response. Luba will see it as procedural error by the city that prejudices the applicant's substantial rights. Luba may also view it as having a sandbagging quality. It will be a basis for remand. Then there is plenty of time for the commission and the parties to absorb this. This is argument, not evidence. Please accept it into the record. And then the code citation is 9.7670, Investigation and Report. At least seven days prior to the public hearing, the staff report, if any, shall be submitted to the Planning Commission and made available to the public upon request. A copy of the report shall be mailed or delivered to the applicant at the time it is delivered to the Planning Commission.
Okay, so the issue there is really whether or not the AIS is, in our opinion, a staff report. And I know when I first, when all this was happening, I was remembering staff specifically saying you were not going to do a staff report and that we were just going to have the AIS. So that's kind of my perception of it. Any other comments? Commissioner Duncan?
Since the applicant agreed that they didn't file their appeal at least seven days in advance for staff to respond correctly, what would have happened if staff would have written a report and given to us prior to a public hearing? Would they have been in violation of not-
So the analysis would be if, I think what you're saying is, the staff report came in three days before the hearing, so it violated the code.
Right.
It's a procedural error, and then there would be arguments about whether that procedural error prejudiced anyone's substantial rights. So arguably, either side could have said, "No, the code says this, you didn't do it in that timeframe, it's a procedural error," and then you have to balance what the prejudices are. So instead of doing that, staff decided to just, you know, the code only says "if any," so they opted not to do a staff report.
Commissioner Belcher?
Well, two things. First of all, you weren't given, excuse me, seven days to respond, so you technically couldn't have within the timeframe, so I understand that argument. I'm a little concerned about making the decision based on your reading a portion of a letter rather than our opportunity to see the whole thing, and I'm wondering if that then might be an appeal issue.
Well, I mean, arguably it is. I'm not sure how far it would go because that was the procedural argument. The rest of it's substance.
Pertaining to?
Pertaining to the designation issue and all the merits of the appeal.
But we're relying on you to tell us that. And then if we were to rule on this, does the opponent have an opportunity to, should they have to be given a response? Opportunity as well if we open the record to receive this?
Yeah, that would probably, I mean, they would have an argument, let's put it that way. So that's why the timeframe is problematic.
Commissioner Jaworski?
Yeah, I have a real problem with this, because the way that I understand what's being said is, anytime the staff wanted to do an AIS for us, it would have to be seven days before the public hearing, and we would never have an AIS after that. To me, it's not a staff report, period.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I keep comparing it to this long document here, the city staff report dated 8/21/13, in the record that I read, which specifically says it's a staff report. And that is very different than an AIS, that, you know, the AIS we typically receive. So I just don't see that, you know, all of a sudden, I agree with Commissioner Jaworski, if now or all of a sudden we're going to open ourselves to a situation where we've set a precedent and now we consider AIS to be staff reports, we're going to have to follow all kinds of timing guidelines on when they're issued when we have a judicial matter. It just seems awkward to start going down that road. And, you know, and, you know, and we can find that way, and if Luba disagrees with us, then we know that we made a mistake. If Luba agrees with us, then we obviously, you know, we can consider the matter closed, and, you know, that's the way it is. I mean, obviously, we respect the parties realistically, given the record, and I know half of it out here are going to follow through on this anyway, and whatever we decide is going to be the final say, so it's going to go to Luba for whatever reason, so let's let them, you know. And if they, you know, if they, that's my point of view.
Okay. Commissioner Borowski?
I just move, I think I'm just going to make a motion to move that the Planning Commission does not accept the AIS as a staff report.
Second. Okay. Does that satisfy? Okay. Any other discussion? Commissioner Belcher?
Well, although I would like to be able to see the document, given that we'd have to reopen the record, wait for a response from the opponent, I agree that clearly AISs are not staff reports. We can't set a precedent that will hamstring our ability to decide issues because we won't have reports from staff that are timely. So I will be voting in favor of the motion.
Are we ready to vote then? All those in favor of determining that an AIS is not a staff report, if I've worded that correctly, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Are those the procedural things we need to deal with?
That's all I had.
Okay, all right. Well, as I mentioned to the commission over the weekend, my thought was, since we do have such a tight timeline on this particular one, and to really try and be the most efficient with our time as possible, what I'd like to do is have us go around, and in two minutes or less, and I actually have a timer, so I'm going to, I'm going to try and keep us to the two minutes, kind of outline our thoughts and positions on the key issues and the key factors with this, the way we see it, just so that we can get a sense of where we're at as a commission as we enter into the deliberations. And I've decided I'm going to take the prerogative as the Chair and go first, and yes, I will time myself. So here's what I see. The zone change is the issue we need to focus on specifically related to the Parks and Open Space designation and the lower-density residential. In other words, did the Hearing's Official err in denying the zone change for the entire property to be R1? That's really the question before us. First, the Metro Plan map at 11 by 17 without magnification, in my opinion, clearly shows Parks and Open Space north of the UGB. The Metro Plan text at 2G9 clearly talks about the South Hills ridgeline and how development should be required to respond to their unique conditions. While this may reinforce the map, I don't believe the text is even necessary, since the Metro Plan map is clear that some Parks and Open Space is north of the UGB line. The Laurel Hill Plan shows no Parks and Open Space at all, yet the 2004 Metro Plan Arlid-specific map clearly still shows Parks and Open Space in the Laurel Hill Plan area. That is clearly a conflict, certainly at least an omission, that once again takes us back to the Metro Plan as the rule. I also don't think it's in our scope or review on this to establish where the line of the Parks and Open Space is. The only issue we need to consider is if the line is contiguous with the UGB or somewhere north of the UGB related to the Hearing's Official's decision. If it's north of the UGB, and I believe it is, then denying the zone change is the correct answer, so a new zone change application with adequate public input on where that line should be is the appropriate course. For us to establish where the line should be eliminates the applicant and the neighbors from weighing in on that, and I think would be a dangerous process issue. So based on that review of the information in the record, I'm leaning toward upholding the Hearing's Official decision to deny the zone change. I had 15 seconds to spare.
Wow.
So that's my two minutes. Who would like to go next?
Commissioner? I'll only, you know, I'll only go because basically you've stated most of my argument. Looking at most of the maps, I, to me, and I would add that the Parks and Open Space is northwest of the UGB. Clearly, how far it is is irrelevant, I feel, because as I understand the issue, if it was only a foot into their property, that's enough for the Public Hearing's Official's decision to be upheld. And I am leaning toward upholding his decision that there is Parks and Open Space within the so-requested zone change.
Next, Commissioner Belcher?
Well, I am in general agreement with what you have both said. I would just add that in Exhibit Number 40, staff, Steve Oaks responding back to Mr. Satry, said, "You've addressed the standard, but it still does not appear that the proposal is consistent with the Metro Plan diagram in relation to Parks and Open Space designation." Nonetheless, on November 9th, 2012, the applicant said, "I'm sorry, make it," he didn't say "I'm sorry," but he said, "I want you to deem the application complete despite that concern." And again, on July 19th, 2013, Mr. Oaks to Mr. Satry again said, "We remain concerned. The proposed document is inconsistent with the Metro Plan Spark and Open Space designation for a portion of the subject site." Nonetheless, we have the application before us. I think the applicant had plenty of notice that this was going to be an issue. They moved ahead, and now it's our turn to reaffirm the Hearing's Official's decision that it wasn't resolved.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I, again, I think you did a very, an excellent job. Chair did an excellent job of summarizing the points, and I agree with those. I also wanted to make the point that this is a property owner requested zone change. This is not part of some, you know, neighborhood planning process or some other process. So in that case, it's up to the applicant to justify the zone change. And, you know, for all of the reasons cited, I have to agree that, have to agree with the Hearing's Official that, you know, that there is, there is an issue with the designation on the Metro Plan and the text in the Metro Plan that indicates clearly that there is Parks and Open Space designation north of the ridgeline, and the application needed to have notified, noticed that. And so, you know, and I won't say anymore because I don't want to go on, but essentially, there would have been other ways to pursue this, which would have been, for example, to apply for an R, you know, zone change for only portion of the property that was not, you know, clearly not in the areas designated as Parks. There were other mechanisms that they had, and chose this.
Okay. Thank you. Who's next? Commissioner Borowski?
Well, I looked at, you know, things the way that the Chair looked at it at some point, but then I also had, was drawn to the Boundary Commission's report. And there's several places in the Boundary Commission report that say, "The annexed area is designated Low Density Residential in the Metro Plan. The annexation has proved the area will be zoned to the city consistent with the plan diagram." And that's referenced two or three times in the Boundary Commission plan when the property was annexed, along with a map that there were adjustments made to it. So I think that that at least needs to be brought into the discussion for consideration. I mean, in my view, again, in my view, the Boundary Commission went out there and put the stakes down and, you know, drew the actual line, and there's several things in here that I think the commission would help the commission make its decision, and I just wanted to make sure that those were brought to the table.
I guess I'll go next.
Commissioner Mills, then Duncan. Does she want to go?
No.
I use the AIS as a guideline for my remarks, and starting with Key Question 1 raised by staff, whether the Metro Plan clearly designates some portion of the property for public, Parks and Open Space. I believe it does. I believe there are sufficient referments for that, and I can't support the applicant's smidgen characterization of what's on the map. Regarding Question 2, whether the Metro Plan text supports the location of the parks, I believe it does. As again, we've said, I think repeatedly, Section 2G9 outlines it clearly. Regarding Question 3, whether the Hearing's Officer properly does distinguish this case from the Knutson case and conclude that the refinement plan diagram and Metro Plan are in conflict. We see they are in conflict, and once again, we have referments on the diagram that I believe lead us to the Metro Plan, which rules in this case. So summation of that is, I'm very, I'm leaning towards, regarding Issue 1, I'm leaning towards support of the Hearing's Officer's finding.
Commissioner Duncan?
Thank you. As I looked at this, it's, I see some consistencies, and I didn't agree that there was not, that the Laurel Hill Plan and the Metro Plan were not consistent. I think Knutson, in my mind, sort of helped resolve some of that issue. I think there was, as you said, the Boundary Commission- I think there was, as you said, the Boundary Commission report played into that. I actually had a question for Staff if I could ask that, maybe we can, as we go on I found that when I read the refinement plan, Resolution Number 3700, which is in the back of the plan, talks about this, actually refers to the Metro Plan and the consistency of this refinement plan with the Metro Plan. And I found, actually was hoping for more discussion on that, because I'm a little bit at odds on Knutson and what it means to be, if I think the refinement plan is consistent with the Metro Plan, and the refinement plan does not show any Parks and Open Space designation, the refinement plan map in the back actually shows two different lines, and I don't know if that, have no way of knowing, was that drawing intended to be two different lines that had some separation to show the difference there between their planning area and the UGB, or if it was just the way the diagram was drawn back in the eight, early 80s? Again, I think Knutson, for me, sort of clarified that we needed to look to the property line boundary as a guide, because as I looked at the maps, I discovered that, in fact, the 30th Highway right-of-way is probably around 400 feet wide and is some of that open space that's talked about being inside the urban growth boundary, actually somewhere in that right-of-way area between where the UGB is and the actual property ownership maps. In addition, I actually took the maps and was concerned about the way the line along there has changed, and it appeared to me that it was some type of computer-generated line, sort of in the, in the later maps where it wasn't there in the early maps, and that bothers me, because if you try to overlay early maps with the later maps, they don't line up. They're different scales on the 8, or the 11 by 17, so from that standpoint, what kind of ambiguity had been added into the maps? However, I also agree that there was Parks and Open Space to the north of the UGB line, and actually in the applicant's application talks about open space being on this tax lot. And it bothered me some that they were there, but then they try to say that it's, it's not there or deal with it. I think if we go on to the PUD, there's some issues that might be dealt with there. But I'm tending to leave, I believe that, in fact, there is Parks and Open Space on the subject property, but I'm going to wait to decide where I'm finally going to land until such time as we get there. And I overran my two minutes.
You did, but that's okay. All right. So that seems to be a general sense of, I think, how we as a commission are seeing this. So with that, I'm wondering if, it sounds, it sounds like we're leaning toward affirming the hearing's official decision on the zone change and denying that, and I'm wondering, Commissioner Belcher?
I'll finish.
Well, no, I, well, I guess I'm wondering if we want to proceed with maybe a motion, a second and a discussion on that issue, and then work out findings if that's the way it goes. Commissioner Belcher.
Well, Commissioner Borowski raised an interesting question about the, the decision by the Boundary Commission, and I guess my first question of Staff is, is it the Boundary Commission's purview to determine the zoning on the property once it's, when it's annexed?
No, the Boundary Commission is, is a body, was a body, that approved the annexation itself and was limited to just that, whether a particular property should be brought into the city or not. It isn't their charge or wasn't their charge to determine any zoning boundaries, plan designation boundaries, or anything of that sort. So why they mention R1 and no POS, I can't speak for the Boundary Commission, but I can say that that wouldn't have been their charge to determine that boundary.
And my next question is, when we annex property, we don't necessarily determine the zone, we, the city?
Right.
We don't determine the zoning at that point in time either, do we?
That's, that's correct. Now, the City Council has that role, and they themselves are not making those determinations at that time. Normally, a zone change follows annexation. Again, that's the process for determining the precision of where the boundary should fall.
Thank you. I think I'm comfortable with that.
Okay. And then I think Commissioner Duncan had a follow-up also.
Yeah, a follow-up on that. The Boundary Commission is made up of the, some of the pub, or some of the, the city staff, isn't it?
No.
So the reference in the record that says it's made up of staff who agree between Lane County, Springfield and City of Eugene is, was not correct?
I don't even know what that reference was, but the Boundary Commission are, were appointed positions.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I don't think it's really necessary, but I just wanted to make the point that one of the problems with our refinement plans is they haven't been updated, and we're talking about, again, an older refinement plan that was adopted, which shows no Parks and Open Space. Yet when we look at the map, we see, you know, we see the new parks planned in the neighborhood without zone, you know, without them being shown on the refinement plan, including Moon Mountain, the Ridge Line Trail, whatever. There's another section of parks down in the valley. Again, that's the nature of the refinement plans, you know, they're, they're written, we don't have a process where we update them regularly, so it's sort of like, you know, the Metro Plan is, is our update mechanism, because we do update on a regular basis. So I have to reject any argument that, you know, based upon Laurelwood Refinement Plan not specifying parks, because there are all these other cases where all of a sudden the Metro Plan has been changed to indicate that these are park, Parks and Open Space.
And I think, I'll, I'll tag on to that, too. That was part of what I saw in this with the refinement plan, is that the refinement plan on that one map specifically, where it was talking about residential designations, had no Parks and Open Space at all, and yet there's, I think it's Laurel Hill Park in the very center of that one area, it just wasn't, wasn't even mentioned. So I think it's either in conflict or at most, it omitted Parks and Open Space from the refinement plan, but I don't believe that, in my opinion, is enough to eliminate Parks and Open Space from the entire Laurel Hill refinement plan. And so I think then it could be considered an error, it could be considered a conflict, and in that sense, then the Metro Plan controls. And so that's how I got to, to my opinion on this. Commissioner Borowski.
Okay. Well, I'm, I'm just going to put out the, the things that I saw in the Boundary Commission that I, that I, I thought would be interesting for deliberations. So the first paragraph that I read, and these are in the second post-hearing or whatever, anyhow, the first, one said the annexation is designated low-density residential in the Metro Plan, so that was one bullet point. And then in findings, number five, the land use designated, designation for the annexed area was low-density residential in the Eugene-Springfield Metropolitan General Plan, the Metro Plan. And these are, these are dated 2007, and that's, that's the reason that I'm kind of bringing it up, is because it's a, it's about the most recent thing that we've got on this. And then the sixth bullet point on findings was, the modified annexation area was zoned agricultural water rights UL overlays in Lane County. After annexes, annexation effective date, the annexed area would be rezoned to AGWR. When needed, a zone change would be proceeded through the City of Eugene according to applied zoning districts considered as consistent with land use designation. So, it's kind of saying what it is. And then the other thing that I thought was interesting was the Boundary Commission map that, that was, was presented in, in the record, and, and it shows the UGB, and it shows where it was and where it actually is. So there's, there's areas that are excluded to the south, there's areas that are excluded to the north. And so what that shows me is that when they went out and actually drew the boundary, they changed that line. You know, at least that's what I see on this map. You know, it says here, "UGB annexation as originally submitted," and then the one that was agreed to by Eugene, Lane County and the applicant, and then areas to be excluded or added. And so, you know, for me, that's, that shows a little bit of the fuzziness that is, is going on. And so to say that this 2004 shaded map, while I agree, the 2004 shaded map does show some areas north, if, if you put this line on it, perhaps some of these excluded areas are not there anymore. And so that tends, for me, to give a little bit more credence to Knutson, you know, because I'm seeing this line change from map to map to map. And whereas the hearing's official said, "Yes, this map is 2004, it's the Metro Plan, it's adopted," you know, I just have pause as to, as to that, especially when the line keeps moving. So I just wanted to bring that to the, the commission's attention.
Okay. I have Commissioner Belcher, then Commissioner Baker, and tie between Commissioners Jaworski and Duncan, so.
Tie goes to the Chair.
So shall I go?
Yes, Commissioner Belcher.
Well, first to the finding number six. It says, "After the annexation effective date, the annexed area would be rezoned to AGWR, not to R1."
Right.
This is the process that should determine what that zoning should be. I forget what my second point is, but I, it's clear to me that the Boundary Commission did not determine this is all R1. And I agree with you that it's not clear where the boundary is, but that's the purpose of this process, and I can't say that none of it is, I can clearly say some of it, the Parks and Open Space designation. I can't show you where that line is, it needs to go back for that to be determined.
Commissioner Baker.
Yeah, I was going to, I would agree with Commissioner Belcher. I think the important point to remember is, the Boundary Commission is not responsible for, or even, it's not relevant to zone changes, it's relevant to the boundaries of the city's of UGB. And what zone changes might occur there are handled by other bodies, including ourselves. So whatever they had in their report about zone changes is, is just irrelevant, unfortunately. And it's unfortunately that they put it in there, it just confuses things. And I, and I have to agree with Commissioner Belcher, although there are some, you know, clearly when they make these zone, these Boundary Commission decisions, they, you know, the groups meet and they decide where the lines go, and it, and sometimes it varies slightly based upon where the roads are, but we also have a general designation that the boundary line here is following the ridge line. So, in general, so again, and based upon the information we have from the Metro Plan, again, it does show that there's Parks and Open Space to the north of the, what appears to be the, the ridge line. So pretty clearly, I have to agree that the Boundary Commission report is just confusing and not really, you know, that's, you know, the zone change is what we have to decide, not the Boundary Commission.
Commissioner Jaworski.
Yeah, I was very pleased when the charge of the Boundary Commission was, was, was given, because one of the issues I had was what were the charges of these various things that we're considering when they, when they were done. For an example, when I was looking at the Laurel Hills, when they did their plan, I believe I read that when that was redone, they were charged with looking at their commercial, industrial and residential. So they may not have even looked at any of the other things when they drew that map, was part of what I was thinking of, because they were charged to look at these things, and maybe that's where their focus was. The same is with the Boundary Commission, is like, if in fact all of this was done and was totally accurate, I don't know the procedural steps. Does that then go to both cities to be adopted and then change the Metro? Because apparently the Metro Plan was never changed based on anything that the Boundary Commission did as far as those designations. So I feel either that was a report that stood out there and the annexation was fine, but all the other things, either A, didn't go through a procedure that I don't know what it is, but it didn't change what was on the Metro Plan map, and that's why I'm still supporting that the hearing's official made the correct decision.
Commissioner Duncan.
I think some of my concern with this is the discussion that the refinement plan is not consistent with the Metro Plan. We rely on our refinement plans to be more directive in most situations on our decisions and our clarity for the Metro Plan. And in fact, again, in the, in the Laurel Hill plan, it talks about the reason for this update is since the time other major policies, it's referring to the Metro Plan, affected the plan area such that the South Hills study and the Metro Area General Plan have been adopted, and in, excuse me, January of 1981, the City Planning Commission initiated the Laurel Hill plan update to respond to the need for the neighborhood plan to reflect and be consistent with these broader policy documents. And then Section 2 of that same document says, "The land use diagram included in the Laurel Hill plan update is hereby adopted as a refinement of the Eugene-Springfield Metro Area General Plan diagram." So they spoke specifically to this being an update to this plan, and as you said, Commissioner Randall, the land use plan that's shown in this document does not show any Parks and Open Space at all, but if we look at the Metro Plan, neither does it except along this little ribbon of the UGB right at, at 30th Avenue. So I may be in agreement that there is some Parks and Open Space, but I'm not sure that I'm in agreement that there, that's, the refinement plan is inconsistent with the Metro Plan based on Knutson.
Okay. I've got myself in the Q2, and will, actually will respond to that. I think, as I was looking at the Metro Plan diagram, the larger map, there appeared to me to be Parks and Open Space within the area where I think it, the, some of the green areas shows, I think the Laurel Hills Golf Course, and then I think that Laurel Hill Park that is within that area, if I was looking at that correctly. And so, you know, to me, I don't think those go away just because the refinement plan didn't address those. Should they have addressed that in the refinement plan, absolutely, but they didn't. And so I don't think, just because of that, that we can say, you know, that it's necessarily at the UGB. So I still feel that there's adequate evidence for us that the Parks and Open Space line, wherever that is, is somewhere north of the UGB. And so that was, I wanted to bring back to that. Are we ready to tackle some of the appeals issues? Or do we want, I mean, I don't want to cut off discussion, but it seems like we're in general agreement on the direction this should go. So appeal issue one, that the hearing's official erred in finding that part of the site plan designated Parks and Open Space, and that the entire site plan is designated low-density residential, and that the hearing's official should have zoned the entire site R1. And I'm hearing from the commission that we disagree with that appeal statement, and that we are leaning toward at least upholding the hearing's official decision to have at least some portion of the property Parks and Open Space, wherever that line might be. Do we need a motion for that, or?
Yeah.
Okay. Someone like to put forth a motion? Commissioner Jaworski.
I'll put forth that motion so that we can discuss it or vote on it.
Okay. Is there a second? Commissioner Mills, discussion.
So the motion is that the hearing's official did not err, is that?
No, the hearing's official erred.
No. The, the motion is that the hearing's official was correct in his determination.
Yes.
Yeah. He did not err.
I said erred, right, okay.
Yeah.
I think it better be restated.
Yeah, let's restate it. Make sure everybody's fair. Let's restate that. See, see if I can restate it. The, the motion is that we affirm the hearing's official decision on the zone change, that at least part of the property should have been designated Parks and Open Space.
So moved, then.
Is that okay with Commissioner Jaworski?
Yes, that's fine.
And Commissioner Mills?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Borowski.
Okay. So just for my clarification, we're basing this, it sounded to me like the, from the discussion that I heard earlier, that we're basing this on
the discussion that I heard earlier, that we're basing this on the fact that the 11-by-17 map showed parks and open spaces north of the UGB. That's basically the nuts and bolts of it.
For me, that's the primary issue, but I think there are other supporting issues with that. And maybe would this be a good time to maybe delineate those? So I think what I'm hearing is that it's based on the 11-by-17 metro plan map. Okay, Commissioner Belcher?
That's not part of the motion. Why don't we pass the motion and then work on the?
Good, okay, and then we can work on the findings. Okay.
I'm just, I'm just trying to get the discussion, I mean, this is, yeah, this is open discussion.
Right. I'm just saying, we don't expand the motion to be something that it is.
Sure. I'm just, I'm just saying that from the discussion that I heard down the table, it was the map, and then, and then.
And that'll be, that'll be part of our findings when we develop those findings. But first, we need to have a motion and an approval, or however we vote, to delineate the findings. And is that, am I doing that right? Okay. Commissioner Belcher?
But if Mr. Borowski still has some concerns, we should err those before we vote.
Yeah. Are they concerns related to whether you vote for or against this motion?
That's what I'm trying to, to find out here, how I'm gonna vote on the motion, based on, and from what I heard, was the majority of it was the map. But then, then the chair said that there were other things that he was basing his vote on, and so that this would be the time to discuss that, so that, you know, yay or nay.
And the other items for me were that the refinement plan had no parks and open space in it whatsoever. And based on that, my feeling is that was not, there's a conflict.
Okay.
And with the conflict, then it reverts back to the metro plan. So those are the two main issues for me. And then Commissioner Baker, you were?
I was just gonna add that for also, there's metro plan text. It's the map and the text, it's not just, and there's specific text in there that.
Okay, Commissioner Belcher?
And when we get to findings, I'm gonna not necessarily agree that the text supports this argument, because it talks about the ridge, and there are certainly places in the metro plan diagram, or the zoning diagram, that don't show parks and open space on the ridge. So that's definitive, but that's for later.
And I think from my perspective, the text is not necessary even to our decision, but we can discuss that. Any other questions related to the motion that will help clarify? Commissioner Duncan?
I'm gonna vote against the motion. I don't believe that we show that in the metro plan maps, that what shows up as the urban growth boundary line is actually the property line that came up, was defined after these maps. I still think that the refinement plan does not show that there's parks and open space on this property. And I, again, I think the refinement plan is consistent. And I read the metro map a little different than you do. I think Laurel Hill is outside, the golf course is outside Laurel Hill, and I think the other green dot is Hendrix Park. So I don't believe there's any parks and open space even shown on the metro plan in the area and/or in the Laurel Hill refinement area. We all get to a lead big difference.
Yes, we do. Commissioner Jaworski?
And not to speak against my own motion, but I somewhat get confused, and maybe it's somewhere along the line, it can be clarified. Normally, I understand if there's a conflict between the refinement plan and the metro plan, the metro plan rules. If that's correct, and I don't understand Commissioners Duncan saying that the refinement plan does, the metro doesn't agree with the refinement. If it doesn't agree, then it's in conflict, and it rules. Either that's a true thing, or is not a true thing. And I've heard in lots and lots of different appeals, that that's the case. So if that's the case, then it's, I consider it a mute point then, at this time.
And I believe you are correct. I believe that is Hendrix Park, yes. But I think there's also significant portions of parks and open space shown north of the UGB, which is the area that we're specifically talking about. Commissioner Baker?
I was gonna essentially add, sort of again agree with Commissioner Jaworski. Again, to me, the metro plan text is not definitive, but it doesn't disagree with the drawing. In other words, it doesn't say that this shall not be. And the same thing with the Laurel Hill refinement plan, which again, was, is an old plan, and we're talking about metro plans that were updated and changed in 2004, 24 years later than the refinement plan was. It doesn't say there shall be no parks and open space in Laurel Valley. It just says on their drawing that they didn't show at the time any. And we know for certain that there have been least areas that appear to be designated parks and open space, the Ridge Line Trail, Moon Mountain, you know, numerous other areas that we presume are updates to, you know, what's going on in the past. So again, I don't feel that there's a conflict at all, and have to agree with Commissioner Jaworski.
Commissioner Mills, and then Commissioner Belcher.
Regarding the text and the map on metro plan, I'm gonna use a different word, I'm gonna use the word complementary, because I believe that the text and the map complement one another, in that the text does not say all of the South Hills ridge line, it says the South Hills ridge line. And the map does not show all of the South Hills ridge line as parks and open space, but it shows a very significant portion of it. So I don't find them in conflict, I find them complementary to one another, in that if you read the text and you could look at the map, it's pretty clear what we had in mind.
Okay. Are we, Commissioner Belcher? Sorry, forgot.
Okay. If I said the urban growth boundary earlier, I meant the ridge line. However, to me, yes, the urban growth boundary appears to move, and the parks and open space boundary appears to move, but never do they not change the relationship. And that is that there's always parks and open space shown north of the urban growth boundary. So to me, that defines the fact that there is park and open space within this proposal, and it hasn't been dealt with.
Are we ready to vote on the motion? Hearing no further discussion, I think we are. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
So, staff, help me here, that I think also, did the motion address key question one?
Well, I think you've actually moved through most of them in your discussion. That's what I wanted to kind of bring back here. So in your action now, the motion on Appeal Item 1, you've pretty much taken care of the questions that we had laid out to hopefully answer that appeal question. I think what would be good, just to make sure we're clear in your vote here of the findings that you're relying on, is, just to make sure that we were in agreement about the reference to that, you're voting to uphold the hearings official's determination to deny the zone change. His basis for that was primarily on, I mean, really, three key issues. One, that he felt the map was clear, clearly identified that, we heard a lot of discussion from you on that point. Two, that the text, I think actually Commissioner Mills kind of put it well, in terms of what the hearings official said, which was that this text further complimented that determination. The text frankly, is not as key an issue if you've already made the first decision, which is, you read the map to be clear. That alone would be enough. And I think the hearings official kind of said as much in his decision to say, this is further evidence of intent of the council. So if there's, if you need to wrestle with those things, that I heard general agreement, but maybe a couple folks that were unsure about those kind of findings. And then the third is that, in looking at the Laurel Hill refinement plan designation, based on what you've already decided in terms of the map designation on the metro plan side, that there is a conflict, therefore the metro plan rules. So those were three key things that he mentioned. You've talked about all three of those, I just want to make sure, as a group, that you were comfortable with those all still being referenced as findings.
Okay. I think from my perspective, that's accurate. I know originally, I talked about how I didn't feel we even needed the text, and so I have no problem with it being considered complementary to that, but I felt the map was very clear, and that alone answered it for me. Commissioner Belcher?
I'm in general concurrence. I'd like to see the text of what you say about the text, but if it just says it's complementary, or it gives some evidence, or, as long as it's not definitive, I'm probably accepting of what you write.
Okay. Commissioner Baker?
Do we need a motion to ask them to prepare a finding for us, or?
Well, we'll get to that as a final thing, but I just want to make sure we're capturing the realm of, if there's any other supplemental findings or anything else, I didn't hear any others. They're pretty much, we're talking about issues the hearings official addressed himself. So I'm hearing that you're in general agreement with that, maybe some clarification about the metro plan text issue. Other than that, I didn't hear you looking at any other findings that were necessary to support that motion that you passed.
And that's what I'm hearing, is that we had pretty much those three topics, and is there any disagreement on that?
So in making that motion, Appeal Item 2 then, really becomes the next question, and I think it's a fairly simple answer, that it's moot. But you would want to, in your final motion, make reference to those other land use applications being denied because of your initial motion, if that makes sense. And you're gonna make me try to figure out that motion for you, aren't you?
So what you're saying is we need a second motion on Appeal Item 2?
Right.
That, let me see if I'll, if I can word this correctly.
And a simple one would be to uphold the hearings official's decision to deny the remaining applications due to his denial of the?
Due to the zone, so it's the all or nothing, you know. Is there a motion to that effect? I'll move that.
I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Baker, seconds. Any further discussion on that one?
Please restate it.
Okay. The, you were gonna, you're making me do that, aren't you?
Oh, well, somebody.
Let me see if I, if I've captured that, that on Appeal Item 2, that all the other, because of us upholding the hearings official decision on the zone change, that the other applications are moot, or also denied because the zone change didn't survive. Is that an accurate?
Yes.
Restatement of?
Right.
Okay. Commissioner Borowski?
Yeah, and just for my clarification, so, so we're not looking at all of those, that whole application, we're just saying, you can't even submit that application, because it's not zoned correctly. Is that, is that basically the nuts and bolts of it?
Well, you submitted it, but.
Right, yeah, so, they submitted it, but we're not actually.
And what you're being asked is whether you agree with the hearings official who said essentially that, that?
And that's the opinion of the city as well, I guess, or the, that's the legal, that's the legal thing, you can't, you can't have that if it's.
That's the decision we're rendering here, because in our opinion, you can't really review the PUD and the other issues if the zoning isn't correct. At least, that's the way I see it. Commissioner Duncan, you were in the queue.
Is, I'm gonna ask, is the correct term here deny? Because we're really not denying anything. It can't go forward without.
I think what you're doing is you're denying the applications, and you're, and the appeal issue is moot, I think is technically what you're doing.
The second appeal issue says, because the HO got the plan designation wrong, he erroneously failed to evaluate the remaining application. So you're disagreeing with that first statement. You're saying he did, you do agree with the hearings official, therefore, this appeal issue is moot.
Well, for me, it would be, I can agree with this, but I didn't agree with the first argument, so I'm.
Right. Right, so you may vote no again, if that's what you wish. If you're, if you.
I want to be clear on that, because since we never got to the other three, I don't know if I would have voted yes or no on those at this point. I do know how I would have voted, but I'm not gonna state that at this point, but.
Well, the appeal issue was that you need to evaluate the remaining applications.
Okay. I guess I wish, you know, for me to agree, I think it needs to be worded without denial in the, because we're actually not denying it, we're not going to hear it any further because of the denial of the first argument.
Okay. So, how did I have that stated? Yeah, and I think, I think that's, that's fair.
It does. Can I just suggest that we instruct the staff to come up with a wording for this second one, so that is appropriate for the?
Well, it's more for your motion, though. We're trying to do this, I think you can say something to the effect of, given your vote on Appeal Issue 1, to uphold the hearings official in denying the zone change, Appeal Issue 2 is hereby, it could be moot, rejected, I don't know what the best.
I think that would allow you to vote in favor, because you're relying on a vote on the first one.
Right.
Okay. And I'm fine with that, with that wording. Commissioner Baker, you were the second. Okay. So because we agreed with the hearings official's decision on the zone change, the other appeal issues are, did we decide we just say moot?
Yeah.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Commissioner Baker, second to that. Baker. Okay. So now, final order? Do we need to? Help me with procedure here.
I don't know if this has to be a vote, but basically, direct staff to prepare a final order that reflects your decisions today.
I move that we direct staff to develop a final order that reflects our decisions today.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay.
And when will we expect that, and when is the act, the vote, the finding?
Next Monday. We'll come back next Monday, so this will be very much the same pattern you just went through recently with the last appeal. We'll prepare the draft final order for you, try to get that out as early as we can for your review. Again, if you think there are some changes that need to be made, we'll need precise wording from you, so we can wrap that up quickly on Monday, the 14th. And it wouldn't hurt to do as Commissioner Randall did last time, to put that out, so people can see where you're going. Don't comment about it, no discussion, but just so others are aware, if there are any wording changes, you can propose those online, so they can see that and be ready to act on that on Monday morning.
Okay. So, Commissioner Baker?
Just a quick question, so that means we will not be having a meeting on Friday, just so we all confirm?
Correct. We will not have a meeting on Friday. Next item on the agenda is other items from staff. None? Okay. Other items from the commission? Commissioner Duncan?
Not that we finish this, but we seem to see Knutson and Carlson popping up a lot in discussions. And I think outside of some hearing process, it would be nice to have a discussion about those, because they keep coming back at us for everybody's using them. And it'd be nice to have a full discussion on what those really mean, and what your interpretations are, and so on and so forth.
All right. And then we have on here that we haven't been able to get to for a while, but we have a few minutes learning. How are we doing? Commissioner Duncan?
Well, again, I've spoken to this, and I think this is another incident, and I know we're in time constraints all the time, but these appeals are getting larger and contain a lot of very technical information in them, and having a week or so to try to get through and digest all of this information is very difficult. And I'm gonna guess that we're going to have more in front of us instead of less at the rate we're going, so anything staff can do ahead of time to give us everything you can get us, I'd rather read stuff, not have an appeal, than sit back and wait for a week before and get handed a couple thousand pages to read and digest, because it makes it impossible, or could be impossible. I know I spent, luckily, my wife's out of town, I'm home alone, so I have a lot of time to read, but I'd rather read novels sometimes than read all these appeals.
Okay. Commissioner Belcher?
Well, I'm in general agreement with Commissioner Duncan, however, I think the timelines for this one made it especially difficult for staff and us.
Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, again, in terms of making the process. Again, in terms of making the process easier for us to, this imposes a small burden on the staff, but I was going to suggest, when you read the record, a lot of times, the same document is put in the record, the same identical document is put in the record multiple times. So, it might be helpful to have another little tape, a column in the table here that indicates it's duplicated by blah, blah, blah. I mean, again, this requires staff to do some work, but I know you would have to have looked through the whole record. You could do that, and that would help us enormously, and no ones, we don't have to read over and over again, they are duplicate. So, just a suggestion.
Commissioner Belcher.
I'm not trying to take the attorney's job here, but it might be wiser to say similar to, rather than duplicated, because someone might argue that there was a sentence difference in my text from that text, and you negated it.
And I think they, they may be duplicated because of who submits those, and so, because it is public record and open for anybody to submit anything, there may be potential duplication. I understand. Yeah.
And one other thing, you know, a lot of these judicial cases sort of resolve around some Luba, previous Luba decision, like the couple of the ones that we've talked about today. And we're sort of at the mercy of the applicants and the appellant's lawyers, discussions to, to get a better handle on that. Again, I don't know how long these decisions are, but maybe it wouldn't be worthwhile to attach it if it's not, you know, if it's only four or five pages, then at least we could try to understand more about.
Yeah. I think Knutson was forwarded to you, and it was only like four pages or something.
Eight pages.
Yeah. Commissioner Duncan.
If, if only excerpts are taken out of something like Knutson, we, do we need to take notice to be able to look at the whole document, both Luba and courts, or are we allowed to look at it once it's referenced?
You can look at a case, no matter what.
Okay.
Yeah.
Commissioner Belcher.
It might be simple enough just to give us a URL of the Luba's court records, so that you don't have to submit all those documents to us. We could look them up. That's another possibility.
Okay. All right. Thank you all. And with that, we're adjourned.